Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Tuesday, March 4th. To order, first.
Order of Business, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. McNamara, any considerations, changes, additions, removals to the agenda?
Yeah, so if we can just for the, just to clarify some of the discussions, stream them out a little bit, if we can take 7A, which is 22 Andover Street allocation request, and let's make that 11A, so it'll be part of the 22 Andover Street discussion.
I don't see an issue with that. Next order of business is to approve minutes from previous meeting, which was the Tuesday, February 7th, 2025 meeting.
Yes, please make a motion that it was not Tuesdays, February 7th, it was Tuesday, February 4th.
Oh.
I didn't catch that.
Yes, thank you. First error caught in the document.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from February 4th as corrected 2025.
I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Comments from citizens. Department head reports.
You have the police water department's report. Highway was not available at this time of the year.
Thank you. Thanks to Mr. Guardiata for adding in the over last year numbers. That's a nice addition.
I asked this at the border commission. I, if you guys want, rather than read all through these, would you like this, these attached at the end of the minutes, like I did last time? The department head reports.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. H receivables report.
Um, still, you know, continuing to collect, things are about the same as last month. One thing we have done is for those accounts that are on a payment agreement, I have put together a list to kind of reach out and remind those folks that their payment agreement is due, whether that's monthly or bimonthly, just to help spur along some of those, because they are held to a different agreement rather than just the money.
Mr. McNamara, there was a flood-affected business that we spoke about, I believe, a year ago, and we wanted to forgive their sewer bill. I noticed that it is still over 120 delinquent on that account.
Is that a move?
Yeah.
Okay, let me follow up on that and see where.
I don't remember what meeting, but.
I remember the meeting, I just don't remember the outcome of it. So let me, let me double check on that.
Do you remember that, Ms. Nicole?
I remember being there. I remember as DIP here, but you definitely remember.
We definitely talked about it, yes.
Yeah, I don't actually remember the outcome either. I just. Any other thing for the age receivables?
No, sir.
Allocation review and possibly approve two allocations. 146 Upper Cross Road would like to construct a new home with a three-bedroom allocation. Then Partridge Road Lot 46 would like to construct a new home with a four-bedroom allocation.
So those are just as proposed. Upper Cross Road has been signed off on by Chief Operator and myself. Hook-on fees are $4,500, allocation fee is $2340.
We just need to make a motion on those two.
Yes, please. But yeah, and just we can do it together. And for Lot 46 on Partridge, hook-on is $2,200, and allocation is $2,184.
I'd make a motion to approve the two new constructions, 146 Upper Cross Road and Partridge Road Lot 46.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Consideration of application for Farmer's Market on Depot Street.
This was continued from last month. After the last month's meeting with discussion regarding asking Emma to secure letters of, you know, I call approval or letters of support from local businesses, which you have. I sent those to you. There was another one that was sent today, which I forwarded along just, you know, fairly recently. I also forwarded you the email that Emma had crafted, or the Farmer's Market had crafted and sent to the Hatchery. Because you remember the letter for concern from the Hatchery outlined some of the issues that they had regarding the location of the Farmer's Market. So you have those, and I guess we will continue that. We can continue that discussion.
Sir. Or Mr. Chair. I own a business on Main Street. Our access is through Depot to get to our parking spaces there. I did not write a letter, but would like to vocalize our support for the Farmer's Market. It was a great asset and something that was easily managed for our access for the short window that they were using.
That's great. Thank you. Mr. McNamara, I see one email yesterday from Russ Hurlbert Photography. Is there any other ones that I'm missing besides Homestyle and Maiden of Mountains?
You should have gotten.
The one from the.
Yeah.
Master Plumbing.
Master Plumbing and as well as step liners.
Yeah. Those two came yesterday.
Okay. There it is. Okay. Wine and Cheese Depot. I would imagine you guys are here to discuss this. Is there anything that you would like to lend opinions or interests or updates in any way, shape, or form before we start to?
No, you're the one saying.
Oh, my goodness. I think that being a past business person in town and driving through town on, whether it be spring, summer, or fall days, there not being, you know, a lot of traffic, a lot of movement, until the Farmer's Market came to town. I believe it's an enormous asset to the county. And location is vital to our community. I think it brings its vibrant, vibrancy is incredible. The people that come. I wasn't going to say anything in regards to the Hatchery, but I do know that it didn't matter which day, whether it was raining or sunny, people would come to me and say they were waiting to go eat at the Hatchery or that they had eaten at the Hatchery. I think that the Farmer's Market brings business to the Hatchery. It brings a lot of business to this area on a Sunday that wouldn't normally be here, I feel.
Yeah, I think the town's vibrant on those Sunday afternoons as well.
Just a couple of things I'd like to add if I can. I have nothing much more to say than what I said last time, but just to reiterate, especially in regards to our location, as Larry was just saying, bringing people right to the center of town certainly has a benefit, not only to neighboring businesses, but also given accessibility to people. That's a big focus of any business, right? Is your business accessible to main populations, to vulnerable populations? Especially given that we authorize SNAP, you know, supplemental nutrition assistance program. We also participate in Farm to Family, another program serviced through WIC. And having a centrally located visible market, no matter who you are passing through town, and we're upping our signage this year, we're very excited about for those two programs, seems very essential. And I hope that through transparency, through our emails with our neighboring business at the Hatchery, that we are demonstrating and hopefully follow through on our desire to be collaborative with our local businesses. If there are, if there is strain, if there are issues, you know, we really truly want to find workable solutions to them. And I hope that we can put that into practice this year, both through our word and through our resources, through our brain power. You know, we're really willing to do the work to make sure that this is equitable for everyone. And I hope to begin a chance to show that this year.
Yeah, I have no idea the time, the start date and the end date is. But if we make a motion, can we do that tonight with just the two of us here? Can we have a go on? Make a motion that we approve the Farmer's Market on Depot Street for the time. Apologies. Is it me?
It's Memorial Day weekend, May 25th, through Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend, which is October 12th.
Okay.
And that's our 21 weeks.
Thank you. 21 weeks. Okay, we got it.
I think that there's overwhelming support for.
Excuse me, you need to second it before.
I did.
You did second it, but it was quiet. But you, I was asking.
Sorry.
I went to. Does the motion need to stay for a period of one year or?
No.
Unless you state it in perpetuity.
I don't need it to. I just, because the dates are wrong.
The letter of request is already logged up.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I did that motion.
I think it's a great net benefit to the town and to not just the immediate businesses, but the neighboring businesses. You know, the delis down the street, the delis up the street, the retail. I think it's great. One thing that I did want to ask is, I believe the Hatchery had a bit of an issue with smells or food trucks being close by their building.
I can address that. It was a trailer issue we had that just lasted for two weeks. And then, you know, not only did I want to fix it as it was, but they approached me about it, and it was clear the next week. Food will always live on the other side away from restaurants.
Great.
And that's the goal the whole time. It was just a fumble we had last year, and I do apologize to those affected.
I think with that being understood, that makes this decision a little bit easier because I want it to be as clear and communicative as possible. And you guys did a great job with that last year. So I look forward to doing it this year. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
One thing, just, you know, I know that this is second year, still going through so many, some growing pains there, but I'm sure that they would love some more security where, you know, hey, we can, you know, expect to do this again each year. And maybe there's some, some ways to kind of think about that where, hey, it can be something barring any major issues. It's a five-year, five-year approval or, you know, something more long-term so that, I'm not sure how that can get done, but.
You guys, or you're not affiliated, the LFM would submit a letter of interest in that, and then they would scope out their dates, and then we would come and chat about it, just like this.
I don't think what this, lease isn't the correct.
No, memorandum of understanding or something.
So that would be what we would have to work out. An MOU with, you know, certain language. I mean, it doesn't have to be explicitly legal, but does have the caveat for the town and/or the Farmer's Market to change things as seen along the way and address to concerns. So.
Yeah, something to think about.
I did have one other Farmer's Market related thing, and I hope that this, well, I'm trying to gauge if this is an okay time. We can settle on a date for our fundraiser. I mentioned last meeting it would be April 3rd. That would be like the date that we would like to pursue. And, you know, there's been a little bit of a shuffle on our end this last month, just in organizational stuff, mostly pertaining to me. But I'm wondering if this is an appropriate time for us to request that or if it needs to be an official line item, given that it's March 4th at the time, and we'd like April 3rd, which is a Thursday. I have a little bit concerned over the timeline.
We would for it to be completely.
You'd have to warn.
You have to submit it. If you can submit something to me like tonight or tomorrow in writing, I'm sure we can warn and formulate a meeting.
Yeah.
You're doing.
We can have a special meeting. We're gonna have to have one for something sooner than later. So we could probably do that.
Good to know. Thank you. And I apologize for the lag on that.
Send it into the town manager, and he'll put it on the docket for the next future meeting.
You got it. Thank you.
Perfect. Short-term rental discussion regarding planning commission study slash findings.
I texted Terry.
She's doing the voting.
Let me just go grab it.
Oh, thank you.
Because I was not communicating, so.
You know, it was really great. We forgot the fire through last night. He presented that to the select board. Oh, that's great. You can just come face it. That is true. That was a good presentation. You did a good job.
Went up to Jackson Gore, the Spring House, just now with Elliot. There's a nice piece of plywood covering a door.
What happened, Dad?
That big windstorm knocked those doors out, I guess. It was crazy. Fearsome was there. I guess it came down when people were in the pool.
So it blew the doors.
Blew the doors down. Yeah.
That's the wind.
And it's coming back.
Did you ruin the hinges or?
It's like a sliding glass door to knock the glass out of the door. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Can you pull those closed for a second?
I would imagine so. Probably gave him a good scare during that.
Is that legit, real glass, or is that the shattered proof?
I think it's a shattered proof glass.
But still.
Hello.
Hi.
I know you're busy up there. Thank you.
Well, my granddaughter just showed up, so.
Important. Very important.
Am I on?
You can hear on.
Okay. So the planning commission devoted a whole meeting to talk about short-term rentals. And I did some research to look up all the other towns in the area and send you guys the data. I updated it before we did this, because this data is from 2024. So we took a look at Flummets, Chester's, Illinois Jones, Woodstock, Lynn Hall's, Land and Dairies, and Perrers. I looked at what we had decided last time. Now, we came before you guys. And we had a different board this time, so means that different things have happened since then. So we made some different decisions. So some of the things we wanted to suggest was that our short-term rentals would be registered, and they would be renewed on a yearly basis. If you rented your home from one day a year or greater, you would need to be registered. Owner occupier, operator availability. We thought that the following emails will be required from owner, the designated professional, and the rental agency. Owner address, email, and phone will be required from registry and interest to receive response within eight hours. You should be available. Occupancy, less than eight can self-certify. We kind of talked about that a lot because a lot of people have occupancies of two per bedroom plus two more. But we had a lot of discussion about that. And what we ended up at is less than eight can self-certify or greater than eight. And the rental would only be allowed if it was determined by the fire marshal or the chief of staff to say. Okay, the next thing we looked at was yearly costs, which we wanted to leave up to the select board to decide that. They assembled that they came up with for, during string, you know, for short-term rentals. Obviously, we talked about how we would use some output in the beginning to hire somebody to send it all up or accompany or whatever you guys decide. But that's one thing everybody in board felt strongly about is if it was a Vermont homesteader, a person who lives here, they should have a little rate. And the person that is using it as an investment property, per se. Knockbox, the first time we looked at that, our current fire chief at the time said we didn't think they were necessary, but we hadn't asked our new fire chief. So we thought that should be determined by the fire chief. Zoning it could make it occur in all areas. Parking requirements would be onsite only when they're parked on the street. Insurance requirements, we had a lot of discussion about that. But majority of the people in our board felt that liability, casualty, and the short-term rental endorsement should be required. But the amount should be determined by the select board. A lot of the other towns have the amount of $1 million worth of insurance, but we wanted to leave that up to the select board. State fire inspection required. Less than eight can submit a health and safety form, but greater than eight would require a CO from the fire marshal or the chief. And the noise and party restrictions. We go with the town's sections of noise restrictions in the village bylaws and in the town bylaws. Some of the suggestions we have for this floor.
One more page.
Uh, one more page, yeah. Fines for violations of non-registration. We would suggest a fine structure. It's based on the number of days of violation, obviously increasing as the violation, you know, doesn't, doesn't get fixed. A company involved, that would be an discretion of the trustees and the select board. This is what we came up with, to present this board into the select board.
Thank you. So most towns have insurance requirements.
Yeah.
With Vermont's new zoning, we're gonna see probably a lot more ADUs popping up, which I think is, I think it's gonna be a good thing for the short-term rental community. When I traveled to Salt Lake City, every single property had an ADU, and every single property was inhabited by year-round residents that then had the ADU to help offset the cost of their mortgage in their property. I think that's a great idea, and I hope more people utilize that, capitalize on that, and are homesteader tax-paying. So you could carve that out into those regulations as such, which would be nice.
But this would be inordinate, so we'd do something that, you know, we would pass along depending on how they want to go with this. I wouldn't mind helping though, if anybody needs help, like, because I've done a lot of research on it.
Mr. McNamara, we formed a rental registry committee two years ago. I think we partnered with Granicus was the name. It's about $30,000 a year. If the local options tax passes, short-term rentals have a 12% room taxed. Would be 13%. What do we, you know, do we form another committee? How do we figure out what this is going to cost? We can run the cost analysis from the rental registry committee, but those numbers inevitably have changed. Now we have a fire chief who, if would be performing these duties, it would have to justify the time spent for that, so.
So I think it's, I think we've looked at this that it is something that is needed in Leveaux. And a lot of the questions that I get is that, is it a, is the town trying to pursue this as a source of revenue? Or is this a fire safety side of things? Revenue is, is great. That's why we're using the local options tax. But the fire safety side of the short-term rentals is what I think is the real crux that scares me as a municipal manager, as a firefighter who's been in some of these situations. So I think pulling in Chief Whalen to discuss what he thinks is viable with some of these options and saying, all right, because there are discussions now at, then where does the town start? Like, I don't think we need to go out and say to Granicus, you know, like, right off the bat, you know, let's hire some, because we know what we need, you know? But I think structuring it to a point of where do we start? For example, the state of Vermont is very close to note, right? If I'm wrong, because you're a little better at this right now than I am. But they are very close to saying that they're not going to inspect any rentals that are under an occupancy of eight.
The way I understand it is, yeah, they're not. If you really harped on it, they may.
They may.
But they're not going to be looking at places that are under eight occupancy.
So we, you know, as a start, do we, and, you know, we also find ourselves in a unique position where we hired our, our new fire chief, or new warfire chief, is a former fire marshal of the state of Vermont. So Ben is, was a fire marshal for a number of years. So he knows to a T those guidelines. And to that point, there is an opportunity to have some sort of an MOU with the state of Vermont for us to conduct, conduct inspections on units, rentals, eight and less. That would, yes, create revenue, but it would also help to eliminate the safety issues that we so frequently are running into. And then have the state, you know, assist with higher numbers of, you know, tenant law. I think that's where we start, you know? I think it's a tremendous undertaking for us to come in and say, hey, we're gonna do everything here. That's huge. We know it is. We've seen the numbers. But if we were to start and say, all right, we're working with the state of Vermont to start to look at, you know, if this is the appetite of the boards in the town to have this looked at, which it seems to be, because we've gone over the safety issues that we've run into and we continue to run into. And I think it's also our due diligence to, you know, not only for our town and our, you know, our community, but we're also asking if there is a, you know, a structure fire in this town or a major emergency at one of these rentals. We are now asking additional towns to come and respond as mutually. So what is our, you know, ethical and moral obligation as well to provide safety to the, to the fire departments and first responders that are coming? That may, and, you know, we may or we, and it all comes back, yes, to that, that trailside fire, or we say, you know, there was a huge fire there, there were, it was overoccupied. God forbid there were people in the building, and now we're asking, you know, people to go in. So we also have an obligation to, to provide that safety and, you know, to our, to our community, but also to our first responders and to our guests that are coming here. Because we've talked about this repeatedly, that every one of us here who's been, who rents an Airbnb or goes somewhere, you assume that the owner is abiding by the rules, you know, the guidelines. But that may not always be the case, you know? And we've run into it a lot this year, this winter already too, with the CO alarms, you know, that don't function or they're, you know, for whatever reason. That at this point is, is worse off than, somebody is a, that a fire. You know, that, you could turn around and have 10 people dead in the house. So I think starting, you know, not trying to digress here, but trying to pull in Chief Whalen, pull in the boards and say, all right, how are we going to break this down? Because the big picture is saying we're gonna do every STR in the town is, I don't think is a feasible option to start. I think we have to start and break it down and, you know, take away what we can.
And I think we should be clear about this, you know? I've been getting asked this question because I served on the rental registry committee a year or two ago. What's it for? What's it for? Well, Leveaux has, I believe, the third or fourth largest grant list. And I'm reading all these towns surrounding us that have short-term rentals regulations. And I'm like, huh, that's weird. We're the third or fourth largest grant list in the state, and it's Wild West.
And I think, to me, and I've said it, it really boils down to the, to the life safety issue because it.
Hot coals go on a deck. You don't know you're not supposed to do that. Maybe some signage would have helped that. There's a vet. There's a vent covering up the propane exhaust that then backs up carbon monoxide into your house and you don't know because the batteries are out. All these potential, potentialities, the trailside that actually burned down didn't harm anybody. These are issues that we've felt on the front lines and I think enough is enough in terms of safety. I think it's time to
But I think these.
Not let business get in the way of safety. And I also think, you know, why does it have to be about something when everybody's already crafting these regulations and we're so far behind the eight ball now? So, the justification isn't on why to do it, the justification is why not to do it. And I don't see a lot of that justification bearing out. So I'd love to learn more, explore this further as well. Thank you.
Justin?
Mr. Schmidt?
I think the planning commission did a great job with this, like, really getting down to bare bones. I think if you really boost it up and have too much, it gets really hard to implement and you get a lot of pushback. That being said, I do question the insurance requirement. Does that, you know, how does that get mandated? And I, you know, we don't require other businesses in the town to have insurance, whether it's a hotel, a bar, whatever it is. Is that needed? I don't know.
Notice how I just mentioned that a couple times ago.
The, the onsite parking, the one thing with more ADUs, with more focus on density, I think it should, maybe there's a way to just apply that to whatever that building is permitted for, where, you know, there may be times where, hey, we have residential housing and part of that is off-site parking or, or something like that. And then finally, I think using a company like Granicus is the best bet to monitor this kind of stuff. You know, we have, based on the numbers, somewhere between six or ten percent of the short-term rentals in the state of Vermont. You know, eight hundred to twelve hundred rental properties in, in Loveau specifically. And having a company like that to go through and, hey, here are the properties that are eight or less. Here are the properties that are more than, you know, eight or more and really being able to nail that down. And one other feature, a lot of, you know, it's a lot of one-offs, but like, hey, we have an issue with this property, we have an issue with that property. And their monitoring service of like, hey, you have an issue, call, call here, I think could be a good way to understand what potential issues are. Where, hey, we have a noise issue, we have a trash issue, a parking issue, whatever that might be. A lot of times, hey, we, you know, call the cops if it's an issue. People don't really want to call the cops, rat your neighbor out or something like that, but there could be these issues that are recurring that, you know, hey, maybe we do need something with it. Or a trash thing. I know some places have, hey, we need to have a bear group trash or things like that.
Trash is absolutely huge.
And that could be a good way just to like, capture that and then be able to beef this up. I do think we should be looking at long-term housing just as much as short-term rentals. We have these big condo complexes. Solitude Village is not in compliance with their egress with us. That is big money, they're not up to code. That is residential as much as it is rentals. We will see the same thing in apartments. I've been in two of the three apartments I've lived in the village, not up to code. One of them didn't have fire and safety, other ones didn't have adequate smoke detectors. I think focusing on safety, we should be paying attention to the safety of our visitors just as much as our residents and making sure that's, that's good to go. I do think we want to support more residential housing. I've done numbers of places in town. You're not making that much more if you're doing short-term versus long-term. There are pros and cons for both. But there may be a way within this where, hey, it's gonna be this set rate for a, for short-term rentals and it's gonna be discounted or free for, for residential housing. I think promoting residential housing is something we do want to do, but I don't think negating the safety piece is anything we should, we should back away from. And again, all of this safety stuff, the laws are already in existence. It's just not being followed or it's, people are not aware of it. So getting that information out there, I think is a, is a good point.
Utilizing the technology to work for you will cut down on the safety exposure. You alluded to Granicus as one of them. Having a text line or an email, direct email line that then goes into a central office and they can build, oh, here comes 112 Main Street complaint again, and then it gets filed into 112 Main Streets. They can compartmentalize it like that, so you know where your problem areas are. That works out well with long-term rentals or long-term housing in that regard, because you can, well, look at how many stacks of violations and complaints this place has. So it enables us to enforce the already on the books rules, rather than then try to create two different sets of, of rules, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Ms. Carter?
I guess it benefits us by having a company like Granicus, they have, they handle all the fees and fines and you have lawyers behind them and the town doesn't have to get into that quite anymore.
And to allude to Mr. Silvestri, who's helping us with listing and assessing, we don't know what's a bedroom and what's not, especially on the condos. Well, a software program such as Granicus, we just keep using them as an example, combs the website photos and will identify where problem bedrooms are and flag them as misuse, which is absolutely crazy that that's the ability that these machines have now. But that will spot a bedroom that's under a stairs in a closet and flag it as not up to code or not beneficial. So there's ways to do that and the information that's shared on the web is information that is shared on the web. Anybody can access it, so if you don't want it out in the ether, don't put it in the ether.
I have a question.
Just talk.
Talking about regulations for eight and over occupancy for places in eight and under, correct? How do you monitor that and regulate it? I mean, take North Hill, you could have thirty rentals up there and one could have two bedrooms, but they could say there's two bedrooms and like, two couches and just come up. How do you monitor?
They look at the ads.
It boils down to advertising.
Yeah, they look at the ads for the place.
So the company, the software company that we would potentially partner with has a bunch of web crawlers that goes out and identifies exactly all the key phrases, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms, what's the square footage.
What I'm, what I'm alluding to is, say you rented it and Noah and I, you were like, yeah, we rented a place up in Loveau and we can come on up. You rented it for four people, but then two other couples come to share it with you. How do you monitor and regulate that? What kind of manpower does it take?
Well, I don't, that's part of the prize, that part of it falls then on the owner and the property, because, so we've had calls where, you know,
Thirty people showed up.
Thirty people showed up and the owner saw it on their camera and called the police and they went up and said, everybody out. Okay. You know, or if the neighbor called and said, you know, then the police and the fire chief would show up. So those, that, again, we don't have the ability to be going to every, be like, yeah, five or six people on that. But that's also the problem, is you're damn right. I mean, Noah, I'm sure with your places, you know that somebody, you know, is like, hey, we rented it says four, but, you know, so-and-so's bringing their brother and that ends up being seven. That happens all the time.
And it goes back to what are you advertising, what are you marketing it for? And that's where, you know, you have a fire and safety permit, eight people. I can't go ahead and have twelve sleeping spaces. I can't have twelve beds in there. I have, I'm permitted for eight sleeping spaces. And that's what needs to be advertised, that would, that's what needs to be in the home. If you are advertising for eight, but you have twelve beds, that is a violation.
That will get flagged by the software.
Yeah, but there is no way to, oh, there's actually nine people there or there's ten. But as long as you're not advertising for that, that's what you're, what we're.
And also some of these places that I researched, I actually called the people that actually do this work in some of these towns. First thing they said to me was, good luck. But after that, they, some of them say, at any moment, it can be inspected. You don't have to do that. At any moment, somebody will let you know it's inspected.
The owner or someone like Noah could just pop in and see how many.
Somebody from Granicus or somebody from the town could just pop in.
Right.
And some of them require that, that it's on the spot inspections are gonna, are gonna happen.
And the fire department will tell you that, you know, they go up for, you know, it could be a false alarm, but they go in and, oh, there's twelve beds in here or there's this basement room with no egress and like, that's, a lot of times that's when things get flagged, is when the fire department shows up.
So there, there was a call the other day where it was an alarm that went off and the alarm company called in because it was a CO alarm and fire chief goes up to check it. It wasn't, the building wasn't occupied. They go to check it out, they go in and they find, the fire chief finds, this is kind of, I guess, the fire chief is also a former fire marshal, so he's looking around and there was not an active, an audible CO alarm in the building. This was just what's called like an environmental safety alarm, so it triggered, it just called the alarm company. So he flagged that building and pulled occupancy, because if that had happened when people were in there, they're all dead.
Yeah.
You know, because they don't know.
No.
So it's things like that where sometimes it's a call, somebody burns toast and they're like, wow, there's three beds in that, in that, in that bedroom, you know, that doesn't.
Yeah. And permits help, you know, holiday weeks, things happen. The town's very busy. You don't, you don't have to check Facebook to realize that trash is thrown in dumpsters that it doesn't belong in, left on the side of the road, cars are parked where they're not supposed to be parked. There's a, there's a nuisance that can form when it's super busy and without the structures in place, it's a little lawless and it also puts extra strain on our emergency services, so. Just a good idea to explore. Thank you, Ms. Carter, and thank you, Planning Commission. Thank you, Noah, for being a liaison between the two boards.
Thank you.
Review and possibly amend health and safety policy recommended by the VLCT.
So this is just a very simple addition to, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To our safety equipment operations guides, that would be A, which is all operators of the sidewalk tractor are required to wear seat safety belts at all times while operating the equipment regardless of the distance traveled or task being performed. Just something that we need to add in there, it was for, a lot of us apply for A.
Got it. Any chance they want to take the beeps off the backing up of those vehicles?
Probably not, probably not.
It's six o'clock, isn't it, so it's okay?
Probably not.
Six in the morning and.
Beep beep beep. Votion would probably forever.
So do we need a motion on that?
We do.
Justin, so I make a motion that we, I'm making a motion that we add the.
Adopt the language of two point A.
The addition on there, is that okay? He's got my favor.
Uh, second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Okay, we have moved this from section seven A and we brought it down to eleven A and this is twenty-two Andover Street discussion.
Just to give you some background on this, this is a property, twenty-two Andover Street, that is being sold currently. It's going to be listed. They, the property owner came to us.
It's going to be listed or it's under contract?
It's going to be listed. Came to us to say they wanted to sell the building as a three-bedroom rather than a two-bedroom. So with that, they needed an additional allocation. That came to light then that they did not have any allocations, but were, have been receiving utility services for the past twenty years.
Oh, great.
Twenty years.
So back to, so, so billing period from seven-one, two thousand five to, you know, well, it will be six-thirty, two thousand five. You see the sewer charges for wastewater, four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-three cents. Now, I can't speak to exactly what happened when this mishap happened, but the, I believe, it's my understanding that the allocation was originally applied for, was never paid, but was, or was, the allocation was paid, but then was not necessarily.
Entered into the system.
Entered into the system. So, um, this is kind of tied into, you know, the allocation request, so we do, here's the thing, is that, yes, it was a mistake on the end of the town to not be building that. But those services were rendered and utilized. The homeowner, you know, advised us that they were not aware that they were on water and wastewater for the town.
You're right in the village.
Did they have any, did they have septic cleaned out? After twenty years, I think you're like, clean your septic.
Where did you even put a septic?
Would the, would the, my recommendation would be the same as it was for the water department, would be that those, that outstanding balance of four thirty, four thousand three eighty fifty-three is due pending and the allocation will be approved pending a payment of the services.
I think that the town does have some fault in this. We should have definitely entered that in and it makes me scared of how many other parcels might be affected by this.
I worry about that too.
Uh, so I'd like to look into this further and, you know what, whoever caught it, that's great. Thank them. The owner did never come forward and say, hey, I've never gotten a sewer bill. What the heck?
Not until they were looking for an additional allocation.
So, all those things, understanding, I don't, I understand that the services were rendered at forty-three eighty and fifty-three cents. I would reckon that the town should eat some of that cost as a, as a, hey, we're sorry to type of good faith.
Would my only, what?
The water's already.
Water did, so that's on that, but the payment of the alloc, the allocation in original, an original, you know, application for it, doesn't that kind of acknowledge the fact that you are on water and wastewater?
Yes, of course.
I feel like it's, it's a.
So I'm, I'm, I'm up to, for whatever you want to do.
But we're not charging them interest. We're just charging them what they should have paid.
Some of it, that's fine, you just, whatever.
You know, um, I, when you go to sell a house, I haven't had the opportunity to sell anything. But I would imagine having a forty-three, well, almost a ten thousand dollar at this point, eighty-five hundred dollar bill coming off the top of that is not necessarily the best surprise. I understand that it was used. I also understand that she could have used it and said, go beat pavement anyway, because it's not like we can shut it off, so. I, you know, I'm probably a little bit more forgiving in, in the realm, just understanding the reality that, you know, people can use the wastewater, it's not like we can cap it off. If you're hooked up to the town, you're hooked up to the town. Whether you pay it or not, it would be paid at the time of selling it. So, I don't know. I think, um, I, I would scrub two to three hundred dollars off of it if I had my.
Would you just want to make it an even four, four thousand?
Yeah, I think that would be my, uh,
Have we talked it off?
My recommendation.
Our town lawyer just, I mean.
No, there's no statute.
Okay, I was asking. I'd be agreeable to that. I mean, I think that the services were rendered, the services were used.
Yeah.
It's like going to a restaurant and getting a steak dinner and walking out without paying. To me, and I can understand a year or two, like twenty years, somebody must have.
Well, I bet after a year or two, they forgot about it, to be honest with you. They probably knew about it for the first year or two.
But we're not asking for any interest for all those years.
No interest, it was used. It was up to us to, because they submitted the allocation. We cashed the check and we never logged it and then we didn't actually follow up, so.
There is some fault on the.
They just buried their head and said, you know, godspeed, and now they're trying to sell and here it is. So, I don't know, I'd be comfortable adjusting it to four thousand as it, as an admitted, we're sorry, we. Um, as it, as an admitted, we're sorry, we didn't catch that as well. Um, but that's up to the, to the board to decide, but that's my motion.
I think the one thing we, and I, I'm not disagreeable with that, but whatever we're doing right now is a precedent and this is probably gonna happen again. There's probably gonna be something we've.
I would hope not.
I hope not, I'm saying if we find another one, so whatever we decide now, I want to be fair to the next person. So if we find another one of these, we kind of follow the same suit.
If it was found to be that it was our fault and we didn't follow up with it.
The same thing.
I would probably treat it the exact same way.
That's why I feel very comfortable with that.
Um, that's me personally, just being in the, in the hospitality world, I guess, I don't know.
So what they would do, they'd, they'd pay the four thousand dollars plus the hook-on fee.
Yes, and then.
But they do that at the time of sale or, or before, because they're trying to list it, so they have to do it then?
They already paid the hook-on fee with the application, didn't they?
They didn't yet.
This is just the usage, isn't it?
Hasn't been fulfilled by the.
The usage.
Okay.
They're, yeah, they wanna add the bedroom, which they would pay for that, yeah. Uh, Julie, I made a motion, uh, you can second it and then we can put it to the vote.
I'll second that.
Um, I, I do understand it sets precedent. I would, you know, like to think that people don't try to cheat out the town services, you know, that we have. If this is more of an, a bigger issue, uh, then again, it's the town's fault, why is it such a big issue?
I would like to think that this is kind of a one-off, I would hope, you know.
Yeah.
So.
But yes, I, I totally understand, uh, where you're coming from as well. So let's put it to vote. All those in favor of dropping it to four thousand instead of four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-three cents signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Okay, um, and now we're gonna approve the bedroom.
Well, you, that probably should be pending.
Yeah, could, cause you can't really.
Yeah, sure.
So we can table that pending payment.
Yep.
We can put that on the agenda if we do that other.
Great, thank you. Clarifying that one for me. Uh, municipal manager update?
Only a few things, um, obviously village meeting is the twenty-sixth of this month. That'll be here. Um, we are fastly approaching.
Excuse me, um, you, you just said the twenty-sixth on the calendar, it's the twenty-fifth.
Is it the twenty-fifth?
Oh, the twenty-fifth.
Julie, is it?
Sorry, I was reading, so the informational is.
And the votes on the twenty-sixth.
So it's the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Thank you, wish.
The twenty-sixth, sorry. Now, looking at the warning here.
Look at what I hear.
It is the twenty-fifth informational meeting.
Annual meeting is the twenty-fifth and public information meeting is the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, so voting takes place during the day.
And then we meet at the night, yeah, thank you.
The, um, so fast approaching too, um, they will be paving in the village. So the, you know, that has the potential to start at the end of March where we will be paving from, um, basically the old subway, so the village line to just past the fire station.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's a good enough.
Fuller paving is doing that, all the crosswalks will be redone. Um, you know, there are some, the only really big changes that are being done are the two parking spots in front of Dunkin' Donuts have been eliminated just because of the hazard that, that is there.
There's also no sidewalk there.
Correct.
And I know that, I don't wanna interrupt you. Um, I know that we spoke about having a contiguous crosswalk or contiguous sidewalk throughout the village. And somewhere down the line, it got kind of paved over and murky. Have we looked into what those deeds say?
No, but we will.
We should before that paving starts.
And Shell, Shell and their permit was to add a sidewalk.
I think probably.
From, but we did, we just did it and we had, they're supposed to, maybe they can almost, unless they can almost work together a little bit. Cause they're, that's in their permit to add a sidewalk to the Legion from, um, Ismael's house.
For their expansion.
For the expansion, so that's in the books, so maybe that could work at the same time a little bit.
Maybe I do think that it is, we need to, you know, think a little bit outside the box in regards to pedestrian traffic in this town. Um, and safety because, you know, and you and I kind of talked about it earlier, but the, those signs in the road that are in the crosswalk don't, don't work.
They don't work, we babble them.
And I, I spend more time focusing on moving.
And the, the ones that we stuck into the ground are too far off of the street.
Yeah.
People don't see them and just blast right by.
So we need to, you know, this isn't anything that's probably new, but we gotta look at some other towns and see what they do. Because, you know, obviously too, now, something, and, 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 you know, I get it, but it's nice, but it also is like for our sidewalks and our crosswalks. It's kind of like of no fault of our own because of the plaza, but it's also counterintuitive that during the winter, we remove those, the sidewalks because they're not out there. So and that's when it's busiest, um, so we need to look at some options, so.
I actually have a great idea, I was gonna bring it up in other business. We have telephone poles going right down the village. Um, there's been talk about burying them, it's millions and millions of dollars, so we're probably not gonna do that. Most towns that I go into that have a similar downtown to us, meaning a lot of vehicles turning in and out over the cross, over the sidewalks. Have tension wires with crosswalk flashing above, going across the street.
Okay.
So tractor-trailers obviously don't hit it because you build it high enough and then they're there year-round and it's just a sign or a flashing light to let you know that there's a crosswalk right there.
You might wanna work with, um, really work with Logan, cause that's what he's doing, that's safe.
I know and I wanna support that.
But they'd be part of it, maybe with the sidewalk part, cause I agree with you, the sidewalks still.
Mr. Schmidt?
Crosswalk.
I think aesthetically, that raises a flag in my head. It probably works. Will, how it look? Um, one thing, and I don't know if because of it being a state road, well, Logan talked about it at a meeting, a few, few meetings ago. But narrower streets are going to slow traffic down. This past week, cars fully parked on all the sides of the road, you're going slow through town. Is there, not that you're gonna take the streets any narrower, but if you painted your parking lines a little wider. That could be a way to slow traffic down. When you're going narrower, you're gonna naturally go, it's not gonna get in the way of snow removal. Um, that could be something to explore if everything's getting redone and repainted. Um, and the other thing is those, those signs, they, they can get hit. I think that's, that's the big one, they can get moved. Is there, I don't know if any towns have it where it's, there's something in the ground, like a manhole cover that gets inserted into?
Yeah, so I'm sure that there's things that you could do to, you know, almost screw on screw, like, you know, if you have a bar that is, it's flush to the road.
And I think it has to be a breakaway or something if it does get clipped, but, um, could be something to look into. And that's, maybe that's something where, oh, you can put those in during the winter, if you get some snow, we know snow's coming, they can take it out or, I don't know.
I am all for making it more pedestrian-friendly. Um, any and all recommendations and suggestions. Um, I just walked over the new walking bridge we got back in October. And the entrance is right off Pleasant Street Extension and cars are just flying right there. I couldn't hardly get in fast enough.
We walk and we run and there's no light there from the, that pedestrian bridge coming this way. It's completely dark for like, I don't know why, there's no streetlight right there.
I appreciate that we have that bridge, I think that that's a great bridge and thank the state for doing that. Now it's up to us to understand what the implications are for that walking.
Sure.
Um, I know that we have a Jersey barrier over here on Pleasant Street to prevent tractor-trailer trucks from coming. I'd like to get a sign there that just says, you'll be fined an obscene amount if you turn here. Um, and then maybe we can get a small partition at that bridge that kind of shuts out just enough to fit either an ADA or a stroller or something to have safe access into that bridge.
Sure.
Um, but these are all just ideas for that.
This is good.
Um, anything else on your municipal manager update? Other business, the only thing I wanted to add was I, we have potholes this year, especially bad because of the, the warm and then the cold and all the snow and the ice. Um, I saw that we were packing down some potholes with pavement. God bless them, is there any way that we should wait just a little longer before those things just get blown out?
So that cold patch that they have, it's really what it is, it's a temporary fix because they put it in.
It's a pandemic.
It's gonna get blown out, it just does. Like they'll be sweeping it off the road in, in a week.
Yeah.
That's really the nature of, you know, that.
How much do we spend in cold patches?
That's not a terrible amount of money because it, it is just kind of dispensable, so, but that is the, the definition of the maintenance side of the highway department. We put that in there and guess what? It's gonna rain today and tomorrow I'm gonna hit it going thirty and it's gonna be all over the side of my truck. It's just what's gonna happen.
Every time, so.
Do you live on Depot Street in there?
Exactly, we know where it is, cause I have a big one in front of my house, my same patches, I rake it off about April. So it's not, you know, it's just one of those things where it'll get us through a week and then in the, in the summer, they may, if it's a bad one, they'll cut it and actually pay them.
Yeah, okay. Uh, set date for next meeting, April eighth?
That'll be it.
Awesome.
Good for me. Side warrants, you've done that, possible executive session?
No.
All right. Move to adjourn?
No, major.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.